We're going to come back into regular session of the city council meeting for February. We have had an executive session tonight and we've already done our roll call. To start our meeting, we're going to ask our city councilman Sean Wilson to lead us in legislative prayer, that's what it's called, and then would you remain standing and we're going to say the pledge of allegiance.
Sean.
Thanks everyone, now please bow your head and pray with me. Heavenly Father, Father God, we thank you for this wonderful day, we thank you for this great community, a great community of leaders. We ask that you will bless this assembly on this evening, that you'll continue to provide us with the wisdom and the knowledge that is needed to govern this area of responsibility to the highest standard for the greater cause of the entire community. We thank you for everyone that is here in our service, continue to redeem our time and bless us in everything that we place our hands to, in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you Sean. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Most of you know I keep track of these odd little things, because I intend to write a book one of these days, but tonight I just said the pledge of allegiance for 993rd time since I've been mayor. I'm really hoping, I think I'm gonna make it, that I will reach a thousand, don't you think? I will make it, because we have several months left. Well, we're thrilled to have everybody here tonight, we do have some special guests with us tonight, we're gonna honor those people here in just a moment. Before I do that however, I wanted to honor Mr. Wallace, who is up there in the video nest. This past week, we all attended the leadership banquet in Waynesville-St. Robert for the Chamber of Commerce, and I had nominated Mr. Wallace for Educator of the Year, and they chose him. And we were so excited that Tim got that honor, and I said in my little description of him, what a great job he does with those students, and all of the opportunities that he gives you guys, to make you really get ready for a career maybe in this. So Tim, our congratulations, we're very proud of you. And tonight on our crew, we have Peyton, we have Josh, Logan, Colby, and Brad. And as usual kids, we thank you so much for what you do. First thing on our agenda is always our consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion.
Motion by Mike France, Sean is a second, and all those in favor, would you raise your hand? It's unanimous, okay? And we paid our bills and approved our minutes. And then always the fun part for me is being able to honor people, and just before I introduce you to some dear friends of mine, Laura and Cornell Miles, I would like to say that I also attended the ARC, in a couple of weeks ago, I attended the ARC, and was able to give a special recognition to a group called the Fun Club. And the Fun Club offers alternative activities for people with differing abilities in our community, many of them adults, so they graduated from school, this gives them an opportunity to socialize and learn different things, and so let me see if I can say all their names. Ally Heelman, Adrienne Falke, Kim Fur, Katie Bilner, and I'm missing one and I'm in trouble. But there are five people who established this club, I'll think of her name here in a moment, and I was excited to recognize them. And then as I have done over the last year, as I'm saying goodbye to the mayor's seat, I have been recognizing good citizens in the community. So I have not been accepting nominations. You know, these are people that either I have not recognized, or people that I just really want to thank for all they've done, to really to make me a better mayor, and to make the city a better place to live. But about a month ago, I get this really nice letter from a neighbor on Blue Street. And they nominated, asked me if I was taking nominations, and that they felt like Cornell and Laura Miles deserved a good citizen award. And I got to thinking about it, what better example of what neighbors are in our community? Neighbors who step up and help when they're needed, offer things when they're needed, and y'all gonna make me cry? I don't believe I've cried any, but I will tell you that I've known these people for nearly fifty years. Had all their children in school, Vic, Melva, I'm missing one, Cornell Jr., Cornell Jr., I missed that. So anyway, these guys, and they were my neighbors for a long time too, I lived on a street over. So first thing we're gonna do is honor these wonderful people, and I'll introduce you to the community, would you guys come up please? See if I quit crying. I'm just a big old baby. I'm a big old baby, come on over here. Everybody always kinda moves over, because they don't want to be in the picture, and I have, do I have a, oh, did you bring yours? You forgot, didn't you? Well guess why?
I knew you had one.
But I really basically said, I said, "To honor your support of your community, your giving spirit, and your tireless efforts, and to the examples that you give other people." And one thing I forgot, Cornell's retired military.
Yes.
In fact, Ms. Laura went over and over, she was so upset that I said her name first. Why are you saying my name first? It should be Cornell's name. And I said, "Well, you're the lady, and you're gonna be first." But I'm so proud of being your friend, we're proud of your service, and we're proud of everything that you do for our community. Laura, many of you would recognize Laura, she worked at the I-Bank.
All three banks.
Oh, all three? Of course I knew you at the I-Bank.
Was Boeckensport Littlewood, and then moved over to something else, and then I went to First State in St. Robertson, finished up at Bank of Iberia.
Okay, and I knew you.
That's where you took my picture.
I knew her of course through the I-Bank, and then I'll tell you another place I knew her. When I first became a councilwoman, and we began working on the downtown revitalization project, Ms. Laura jumped in our committee, David Downtown, she jumped on the committee and became part of the downtown beautification committee, and one of our real big achievements was that we got that clock put on the square, and Laura took part in that. And then, what great parents you've been. So my congratulations to you, I can't honor you enough.
You wanna know something, kids?
Thank you, appreciate it very much, Mayor.
And let's do some pictures here, and then I'm gonna let you talk a minute.
Uh-oh, I wouldn't want to run for this.
Oh, that little thing up there. Did you put the flash on?
Yes.
Oh yeah, cool, cool, okay. I don't ever have it on. You guys can say a word if you'd like. Oh, and yes he was.
What?
Cornell was Veteran of the Year, and was Marshal of the Veterans Parade.
Right.
So if you have anything to say to the community, we would love to hear from you.
This is home, one of the coal miners' daughter from Pennsylvania to Waynesville, Missouri, this is home. Twenty-four years military with my husband, the Lord willing, sixteenth of, sorry, fifteenth of July, we will have sixty years of marriage.
Don't nobody cry, 'cause I'm doing fine, I'm doing fine.
Go ahead.
Oh wow. When I decided to make Waynesville my home, I didn't have, I had no clue that I was where I was gonna retire, until my kids decided they were gonna spend their ways, times away from home, and one was gonna join the army, and the other two was gonna go off to college, and I said, "Wow, this is not gonna be right unless those kids, when they get out someplace, say, 'Hey, how's your dad doing?'" I don't have a clue, last time I saw him, he was over Yama. And ever since I've been here, I've really enjoyed it. And the biggest thing that I recall doing since we're being honored for this, is that you recall the big ice storm that we had?
Yeah.
Oh nine.
Yes, exactly. Well, I went out and bought two chainsaws and a long pole saw, and the first place, the first residence that I hit, or that me and five other guys hit, was Mrs. Conley's home, and where they had all of their trees just falling all over the place. And then from there on, we had several other residents that we did and cleaned up. I also, after retirement, I was a Waynesville Police Department dispatcher, then I went to Plassey County 911. I was on my way to becoming a reserve deputy, until I said, "No, I did not spend twenty-four years in the Army to come out here and get shot by something, idiot." But everything I have done, I really enjoy doing. It's a pleasure when you give so much, and that you find people that really do their above and beyond, like you, Mayor, to recognize those who do a lot. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Very good, we appreciate it. She wants to say one more thing, but can I say one more thing? He looks like he's like fifty. Do you not age?
Do you not, are you kidding?
I mean, you've got gray hair, no, I'm not kidding you, don't you think? He's as handsome as ever. Okay, I'm through.
For my husband, I think to me, the most memorable thing he's done here in Waynesville was the Missing in America Project, with going out researching and finding the military cremains that had not been claimed and correctly put away, and take care of that. So he started that here in Waynesville.
Very good.
And believe it or not, that's still going on.
Yes.
It's still going on.
I actually remember that, because there were unclaimed cremains at our funeral home.
Exactly.
And they didn't know what to do with them.
There was exactly twenty-two.
Wow.
And out of that twenty-two, there were twelve families that was actually still here, and when they found out what was going on.
Wow.
And that they did not have to pay out of their pocket to go down to the funeral home and tell them, "I would like to reclaim my loved ones' remains," and do it and get it like that.
Wow. And you know, I forgot, I have a city coin to give to Cornell for his military service.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it.
And I have, what about me? For Laura, I have a key to the city, but now it's real little.
That's okay.
And it doesn't open anything. But you know what? That was gonna look great on your lapel.
Yes, yes.
Love you. Love you again.
Thank you, Mayor.
I will not forget that, and you know what? Be sure and invite me to your anniversary.
Do you know what the Legion Riders do?
Yes.
Legacy run?
Yes, I do. Okay, he wants to talk about the Legacy Riders.
How many know about the Legacy Run?
Well, I guess that's me.
And that's, it is outstanding, that the Legion Riders started this back in the hole, I think nineteen eighty-two, out of Indianapolis, Indiana. They go out, and they go to every American Legion, they're different areas, they might be south, they might be north, they might be west, they might be east, and they notify all of the Legions that are within the route that they plan over a year ahead in advance. Then that, those Legions, they go out and collect donations for everything that they possibly can, even if it's just a dollar, it's gonna help. Now, what do they do with all these thousands, and over, I think a million now? What do they do with all that money? The one and only purpose is that if a veteran should die at the time of war, they have a spouse that is being left, with one, two, three, sometimes as high as four kids. That wife, that spouse, I don't care who she is, or how much she has in the bank, is not gonna have enough money to put all those kids through college if they want to go through it. So if that happens, the veteran dies at the time of war, if those kids decide they want to join, they want to go to college, they no longer have to worry. If mom can't handle it, contact an American Legion veteran, and we at that time will get them in touch with the Legacy people, and they will put those kids through college as long as they hold up above sea average.
Very good.
You can't beat that, we'll stick.
Super.
Thank you.
Cornell reminds me maybe of me sometime, when I sat in the house for so long, and I wanna talk. Right? I wanna talk to, it used to be, when I had just kids, I wanna talk to an adult. So we appreciate you sharing that, Cornell, that's a wonderful story, and of course I've dealt with them and worked with them many times, and appreciate you guys. And then David, would my friend David come up? Here, I've got the real thing. Guys, I'd like to introduce to you guys David Hassett. And David... David is our business spotlight, Bill, out of your committee, and come on up here with me by the way. And David owns Lost in the Woods Antiques. Now, I don't like that name very much, but it has stuck, and we all love you. And what a great story you run. I was reading some of the, when I announced it, I was reading some of the comments that people made, and you are just very much appreciated and admired. So Lost in the Woods is downtown Waynesville, he opened his store, he and his wife Jane opened the store in 2012. This establishment is owned by them, they are a military family, and again, after years of service to this country, they chose to make Waynesville their home, and much like Miles. Lost in the Woods showcases uptown, get it, uptown vintage pieces in a down home atmosphere, I like that a lot. They're well-known across the region for their ability to make you feel like family, as they offer a level of customer care that is very rare in these days. You go into Lost in the Woods, you've got coffee, he'll give you candy, and he'll talk to you. Cornell, he'll talk to you, okay? So we are thrilled to honor Lost in the Woods, one of his customers nominated him, and again, I'll say to the public that we do take nominations, and so if there's a store in Waynesville, a business in Waynesville, that you would like to honor, all you need, I'm losing my voice, all you need to do is get ahold of Miriam here at City Hall, or our Facebook page, just write her a note. So congratulations to you, David.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Please tell Jane that too.
I will.
Okay?
If you go in there, he will tell you something.
And he'll tell you something, I've bought many things from him. They usually involve records and the cardinals.
True.
Got it?
Thank you.
You wanna say anything, Dave?
Uh-oh.
Oh, come back, we gotta look at this girl.
Thank you.
All right, now, anything you wanna say to the...
I just wanna say thank you.
Facebook audience?
Facebook, say thank you to everybody that's supported us, we just started our ninth year, which is kind of unheard of, for especially first-time business owners, so just thank you very much.
Very good. There you go.
So many years ago.
There you go. Thank you, thank you all, that was wonderful. Miriam, could I have my phone, so that I can look up the other lady's name that I forgot to say, 'cause I'm gonna get in trouble if I don't do that. So congratulations again to all of you, we appreciate everything that you do for the city. We have our board and commission reports, and the first one as always is Lawrence Beamer, and he is the chairman of the park board, and I believe in the audience tonight is a member, and that is Amanda Corn. So Lawrence, if you'll come up, remind the council that if you're gonna talk, be sure to flip your microphone.
I'm going to introduce a guest that came to the park board and let her talk as a citizen comment, and I have these to pass out. Ms. Bonnie Wilson will talk about what she took to the park board. It does not just about the parks, it's about the city, it's about the state, it's about everything, so please listen to her. She's gonna bring it down a little bit, from what she did at the park.
He said I took too much time, so I'm gonna make it.
He said that?
Yeah, that's pretty funny.
And Bonnie's a teacher too, so watch out. Okay.
He's already goes, but my name is Bonnie Wilson, I'm a retired science teacher and pastor from the Waynesville district. I also work as a seasonal park naturalist and state parks in Arkansas, Missouri. Since I retired, I've spent a lot of time volunteering for the Missouri Department of Conservation, teaching kids to fish, and also in outdoor classrooms, outdoor classrooms are called Nature Unleashed, with my granddaughter, we teach the EFL at Wood.
It's called Nature what?
Nature Unleashed.
Very good.
And we teach with my granddaughter Chelsea. So I've done a lot, and I'm also on the screen team, I'm a classic county pastor, a pastor of the Chardner, I'm in training for the Missouri Master Naturalist, and I would like to add to this list, volunteering for the park here in Waynesville, because the park is really years in my heart, I love it. What I'm here today to talk to you about is a threat to the park, especially the trees, and if you look at the packet I gave you, I won't go through this page by page, but I would like to introduce this invasive plant, it's called Winter Creeper, it's on the Missouri invasive, what we call not just weed lists in Missouri, and it's also on the federal invasive species list. It came to the United States in nineteen oh seven from China as an oriental ground cover, it is still sold at Menards, Lowe's, and Walmart, yes, and it is, they're trying to get that outlawed, but right now it's still there, so if you ever see it for sale, and it's sold by a scientific name, don't buy it. You can skip over to page three, on page three, I don't wanna read this to you, because it tells you all you really need to know about the plant.
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace, can you pick up her volume? Okay, very good, I was worried, go ahead.
According to rankings by the USDA Forest Service Local Exotic Pest Plant Council, that's a lot of words, and the Virginia Department of Conservation, as of 2009, Winter Creeper may be the most invasive exotic plant impacting southern regions of the United States, especially Kentucky, Tennessee, and Missouri, it's in our park. Winter Creeper grows in two ways, it grows vertically and can climb up to seventy feet on trees and buildings. Winter Creeper also grows with thick mat on the ground and can reach a depth of three feet. Winter Creeper forms flowers and fruit only when it's climbing, it can spread rapidly from a thousand of seeds that drop to the ground, and it's capable of rooting as it runs across the ground, because everywhere it touches, it will root. Winter Creeper attacks in two areas, main ways. The biggest threat to forests is its ability to climb up to the crown of a mature tree and overtop it. When Winter Creeper overtops the canopy of a tree, it blocks the sun from the tree leaves, slows down the tree's ability to do further sentience, this weakens the tree and makes it more susceptible to disease, insects, and flooding. If the trees in the park are weakened in this way and killed by Winter Creeper, it will destroy the natural barrier that the tree roots provide and help cut down erosion and flooding, and this is a major problem in our park. Winter Creeper also grows very rapidly and takes over everything that's passed, it forms a thick mat on the ground and smuddles other plants and seals nutrients and moistens them source. It can complete, Winter Creeper outcompletes all native plants. Judy Faulkner from the Virginia Public Park System says that, "For Winter Creeper lives, native plants die. Trees do not thrive. Without native plants and trees, our world of insects and other animals can't find a food and shelter they need to survive."
I've actually seen this picture, Bonnie, on your second page, up there in the right-hand corner, I've seen that in the park.
Oh yeah.
That ground cover, we, I always say, "Oh, look at the ground cover."
Oh yeah.
No ground cover, we don't want that.
Well, I wanted to make sure I identified correctly, so I got ahold of a representative from the Missouri Department of Conservation, and also, and he met me in the park, and he brought with him a forester from the Markway National Forest. Real quick, they were supposed to walk the whole trail with me, which I walk that trail all the time. They got there, and they get out of the big F-154 truck, and they're like in their thirties, and they're like these, you know, really robust young men, legs longer than my whole body, I couldn't go to walk with them ten minutes and then it's done. But they did do this, they did affirm that I had identified correctly, it is Winter Creeper. So now, now we're gonna take a walk through the park. If you turn on page four, this is a picture from the park that I took this February, and this is at the, going up toward the spring. If you look to the right-hand side of that picture, that is Winter Creeper on all those trees.
Wow.
If you look at the left-hand side, that is another invasive species called Japanese honeysuckle. So, my dog and I walk this trail all the time, and the last time I walked it, I counted the trees just along the trail that had Winter Creeper growing in them, and there are a hundred and fifty-nine trees, twelve inches in diameter or bigger.
Wow.
That have this in them. That's just along the trail. If you look, if you look toward the creek, it goes from that trail all the way to the creek, it's just a lot, so turn the page, we're just gonna go through it, all these pictures are taken in the park. That's an example of the tree being overtopped by Winter Creeper, and you can see the dead branches at the top. The next page is also a tree that's being overtopped by Winter Creeper.
Wow.
See more damage to the tree. The next one on page seven, they're all, the pages are all numbered at the top, right-hand side is in the corner. Page seven, that is another tree that's being overtopped by Winter Creeper, and you can see the branch, the big branches at the top are dying and falling. There's a hundred and fifty-nine trees, they're not all that bad a shape, but there's a hundred and fifty-nine trees just along the trail that are impacted by that. If you look on page eight, this is an old ash tree that stands by the road, close to the parking area by the handicap fishing spot, and you can see how big that tree is if you compare it to that truck. And this shows you how Winter Creeper grows on the trunk of the tree, and then the vines were up to the top, this tree is dying, the forester that, this is his part of law, but he did say that that tree is dying, he says he thinks it's dying from an emerald ash worm, which is an insect.
Yes, and we're aware of that.
Yeah, but that tree might have gotten, been more susceptible to the emerald ash worm because the Winter Creeper was on it. Turn the page, this is the same, this is a picture of the same tree, and if you look, it's kinda hard to tell, but if you look right here, that's the stem of the Winter Creeper, and this is six inches in diameter. This Winter Creeper's been in this tree for years. And turn the page again, and the next page is this big old ash tree, and I'm standing at the trunk looking up, and it's really hard to see any bark, that's all Winter Creeper on this tree, this tree is being strangled by...
That real thick thing is your...
Yes.
Oh my.
If you, if you look, like right in here, and you can see the bark, all of this is Winter Creeper, even this, and this is probably like four inches in diameter this tree, and this Winter Creeper is standing right there. Okay, moving on. Okay, that's all examples of overtopping a tree. And the next way it can impact an area is by forming a mat. So if you look on page eleven, this is a picture of Winter Creeper mounted forest floor in the Waynesville City Park, and this actually is in the Ruby section of the park. And if you look at the ruler, it's nine inches thick already, it can get up to three feet or three feet thick. Even an acorn falling on that can't root, because it can't find the ground. And if you look at the next page, that is another example of it as a mat on the ground, and nothing can grow there, not even ground. So, and this picture is in the Ruby section of the park too, on the, on the park side with playground and everything. And turn the page, this is not Waynesville City Park now, forty years ago when I explored the park with my kids, this is what it looked like.
Yeah, I remember.
It's beautiful. I actually even looked up on our, online, I looked up the Ralph Laufman Park and the Ruby Park.
It's not Ralph Laufman, by the way. Ralph Laufman was our teacher.
Oh, what is it?
He's our teacher friend.
It's Roy.
It's Roy Laufman.
Oh really?
Yes.
Sorry.
Ralph was our principal.
That's probably why I said that, anyway, I apologize, the spring sign, it wasn't trying to fly.
Sorry.
Oh, when I explored the park with my kids, that's what it looked like.
Yeah.
And now, between page, this is what it looked like when I explored the park with my three grandkids, that's what's left. And this is right above the bridge on the Ruby, or the spring side. If you look, that Winter Creeper grows all the way to the spring. It is a major, major problem. Okay, now, turn the page, what do you do about it? This is a picture of a gentleman using the cut-stem method to control this, and this is actually not a Winter Creeper, he's cutting that oriental trigger tree, but it's the same process, and what you do is you cut the stem, and the bottom part of that, it goes into the ground, you have to paint the top of that when it's freshly cut with an herbicide. Then it kills it at the root, and then the top part dies because it can't get water and nutrients, and then it falls from the tree. The next two pages are an article that I found about a park in Kentucky that's set up a lot like ours, and it runs along the Kentucky River, and ours runs along the Wicked Creek. This is a group of volunteers that they put together that actually attacked this problem. And I would like to see a group of volunteers put together here to attack the problem also, because it's amazing what a bunch of like-minded people can accomplish, because this is real labor intensive. If you look on page eighteen and nineteen, this is some information on how to control the Winter Creeper, and if you look on the fourth paragraph down there, I think I put, I either highlighted it or put an X by it, the way to, the way to control what's climbing the trees is to do the cut-stem method. The way to, the way to control what's climbing the trees is to do the cut-stem method. You have to be really careful, though, what kind of herbicides you use, because the creek is right there. And I don't know enough about herbicides to tell you what to use, but I'm sure your fish biologist could help you, or anybody else could help you with that. And then, if you look on the next page, on page 19, it shows you, I think it's the fifth paragraph down, for the low patches that are on the ground, you can cut it, the patch to the ground early in the growing season with a mower, or weed eater, or machete, or any other tool. And then it says you can spray that, but once again, I don't know enough about the spray to tell you what to use there. If you do that enough, that will die. That's why it's not in the soccer field, because it's mowed there. I was walking across the soccer field the other day, and there was a little bit of heat, so I naved it out.
Because the mowing gets rid of it.
Yes, if you do it consistently. It might take two years, but if you keep it mowed down, weed eat it down, it will kill it. So there's a way to kill them, and it's not, it wouldn't be really expensive. It's just labor-intensive, and then you'd have to figure out what kind of herbicide to use. The very last page is, this is an information sheet on the Missouri invasive plant task force, and I talked to Nathan Memphis, who's the coordinator of this program, and he was very, very helpful, and he said he would help us in any way that he could, and his phone number is there. Also, at the bottom of the page, there's some more places where you can get information about how to help fix it, and then my phone number is there too, if you'd like to have that.
Wow.
I really, really am worried that when I, when my great-grand, I'm sorry. This is really important to me, but I'm really worried that when my great-grand, my great-great-grandkids are pushing me through the park in my wheelchair, or I'm chasing them on my motorized wheelchair, that all they'll see is Winter Creeper. The trees will be gone, and they'll just see a mat of Winter Creeper crawling, and I'll look for something to crawl up. So that's what I have to say. And also, Ms. Wilson, I would like to thank you for your service for eight years to handle my winter tree that you have.
You've done some research here, girlfriend.
Yes, ma'am, I have. I have contacted the Reserve Park Conservation. I've contacted Markland National Forest. I've contacted the Department of Agipholms, Jefferson City, who else? And there's Nathan Memphis on this program.
Well, I, I obviously didn't know what I was looking at when I called it ground cover.
Yes.
When you started talking, I said, is this even worth, worse than Kudzu?
It is.
Because we have Kudzu, and it's a horrible thing.
It's compared to Kudzu.
Okay, so you say this is labor-intensive?
Yes.
And I'm going to say to John and Bruce, we have so many groups at Fort Leonard Wood that want to come and help and volunteer and do jobs, that this might be something that we could use some of them for.
I know there are pictures that they're just winter pictures.
Yes, because I have not, okay, I, I walk the trail with my dog almost five times a day.
Bonnie, when we cut it, is there a season?
Oh, yes, there is, and I think it tells you that on the pages there. I believe it says that winter time is the best time to cut it.
Because it's not blooming.
Right.
But that might be a good project for us to get on, Lawrence. Lawrence, I'll throw you and Amanda in there too, but obviously you'd have to work through John and Bruce.
She, she already has some people that are willing to come out and, and start working on what they can. Well, I, I actually went down to the creek the other day by myself, and I cut some off of some of the little tree, and I jumped on one of the big sycamore trees.
You jumped on it?
Yeah, I did.
Go, Bonnie.
I jumped on it with a saw and hit her.
I'm glad we didn't see it, because you'd have been in trouble.
No, he said I could.
Oh, well, okay.
I got some issues.
He would have pardoned you.
Yeah, I'm not that unproved. Yes, I got some issues. But it was, I also had Winter Creeper in it, which is another invasive species, and it had Japanese honeysuckle in it, and a type of poison ivy, which I got.
Is that the one?
Yeah, so it is doable, and anyway.
Can I tell you that we were very aware of the emerald ash boar?
Yes.
I'm saying it wrong, but, and have been working on that. And in fact, have taken down a couple of trees.
Right, well, that, that.
And it really caused a stir when we took those trees down. I got several messages from people.
I'm sure you did.
And had to explain to them why they had to come down. And so we know that's a problem, and here's another one that, we have a new park superintendent.
I met him.
Trey, and again, John and Bruce are the guys that will be moving with this, you know, whatever we do.
Well, some of these trees are 37 inches in diameter, but this is it.
That's pretty big.
That is very big. Those trees have been there since my mom was born. She's nine.
And they're dying.
They're going to die, and they are, some of them across this dying mound, they'll have to come down too because of where they are.
I have noticed the pictures you have of the tops coming off. I've noticed that in our park. Have you noticed that, Bruce?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that, I just want to present that to you and thank you.
Well, I, I thank you, and I think the whole council thanks you. Because that's, again, how you get something done.
And I would love to help with the volunteers, so thank you all.
Okay, we got your number? We got your number, Bonnie. But again, we appreciate that, and again, that's how government's supposed to work.
Thank you.
Yeah. Lawrence?
The park board?
Wait a minute. Any questions for Mr. Wilson, Ms. Wilson?
No.
Anybody?
I've done that with the very high poison ivy too.
Okay.
Vines and it's, they'll.
Wanted to be sure. Okay, Lawrence?
The park board met at 6:00 and adjourned at 7:19.
Hey, that was good. You have an award.
I thought she'd like that. That's just one of my presents too.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
But go ahead and make it short.
Yeah, I will, and I really appreciate Bonnie totally.
Oh, yes.
Glad she brought it up, and I know Mr. Harrell and Mr. Doyle are really happy also. And I'm sure they're going to dive into it, hopefully. And Trey already has a copy of that, so he's privy to it himself.
Well, at least now we know.
Yeah.
We know. That's part of the issue right there. Go ahead.
Agreed. We did have another guest. His name was, I'm going to go right into the WSR, Scott Bryan, and he did present a problem he's got, and we do have a problem with WSR. We're having trouble with sponsors. We're having trouble with, of, of, uh, kids joining, you know, everything's down. Let's put it that way.
I got many com, many comments on the photography.
And the photography is one of the things that I understand is being worked on and looked at. So, but that's what Scott Bryan come up with. I didn't mention, I didn't mention Mike because I didn't know, I didn't, that's why I didn't mention him. Anyway, all that's down, I did go to the school board meeting Tuesday over at Lakeway, and they're willing to work with the WSR and see if they can do something. They're already working over there with the baseball team, because we have a flood problem, so that messes up our soccer. And I actually came up with a solution. I actually know somebody that everybody here knows. His name is Councilman Wilson. He has an insight to have weather taken care of if he did it during a pumpkin fest. He took care of.
Oh, take care of the weather, yeah.
Yeah, the weather, so I'm going to recruit him.
I got it, Lawrence.
Yeah.
Sean, he drops names all the time.
Right, right. And anyway, I'm trying to do that, plus I understand you're trying to get back on post. That's my biggest worry is the WSR. As far as Trey's report on the superintendent down there, they do have still a problem with the bathroom, the jacks that lift and bring it down. They're having troubles with the gears in it. It took them almost half a day to just get it set up, and the maintenance was not supposed to take that long. So they're all looking into that also.
You mean the bathroom at the RV park?
Yes, the RV park, correct.
Littleman Jack's.
Okay.
Littleman, that's correct, that's right. And one more thing, we have an event on February 22nd, God House Walk-a-thon. And that's the only event we have other than, on Saturday, February 29th, there's no excuse, because everybody I talked to did not know it was a leap year, so nobody's got that day scheduled. Get over to, get over to VFW and get in on the black light bingo. And they have a chili dinner there and a 50/50 raffle. Get over there, fill those seats up. There are a couple hundred seats over there. There are a couple members here from VFW, Councilman Liberty and myself. And we weigh support for WSR, and they be sponsored.
I would say two more dates that you probably want to get on your calendar would be the May 16th is Kids in the Park Day, and April 7th is the American Legion Egg Hunt, which is always a big event for our city. Hundreds of kids come out for that, so April 7th and May 16th.
That'll all be brought up, then. But please, please come out to the VFW on a day that doesn't exist.
Questions for Lawrence, anybody?
Yep.
Lawrence, you have an A+ for the day.
Are you all right?
First of all, you brought Bonnie in, and second of all, that was a short report, and it was to the point.
And I wasn't done, so I did.
So, thank you.
Yeah, you've got, you've got, you've got it in front of you. Just go ahead and read it. You got enough homework to do?
Well, and we do have it in front of us, but I would like for you to get high points, and you did a good job of that, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, go back a minute. The Fun Club. Would you believe the one I left out was the one that I talked to about all this? And it's Connie Trower. Connie Trower is part of that group, and there are five of those girls that do that wonderful job. So my compliments to them. Planning and zoning, Cecil is not here. Bruce, do you want to take that? I believe I was out of town.
Mayor, this is about our January meeting. I don't think it made the minutes at the last meeting. And the actions, appointed a new chairman. Janet Pryder had resigned, and Twilight Corry was appointed as the new chairwoman. We also discussed the adoption of 2018 ICC building codes, and I think John, Mitch, and Nathan discussed the codes and some of the proposed changes, and the planning commission approved those codes and recommended they be adopted. We're in the process of doing a little more research and probably present those to the different committees and to the city council in the future. I think we're getting a little more input from developers and builders.
Of course, we saw that on our goals for the year.
Yes, that was a kind of a goal, to research that and see if we could adopt a code that would be good for our, any questions?
Very good. Planning and zoning, anybody? Cecil, by the way, is out of town, and so he could not be here tonight. Standing committees, Councilman France, start us off with roads and grounds.
Okay, we met on February 6th. Call of order, no citizens' comments, major projects. We've talked about them for the last couple weeks. We have our paving down, what we're going to do when the park, when the pavement plant opens up. Park grant, Mr. Harrell stated that we have permission to proceed on our recreational trail. Grant for the park, there's an issue with the location of the restroom. It was like seven or eight inches into the flowway versus the floodway. So it's kind of like, we got that corrected, so that's just a matter of getting to moving and building season, and everybody is, right now, we've got all kinds of projects going, so. It'll get started, and we'll have another bathroom down in the park, as well as extending the trail up towards the downtown area. Street department, Brian Adams stated his department has worked several snow and ice events and a small flood in the past month. They've regravelled Pippin Road and cleaned up the park. Brian Adams suggested changing the budget to pave Pippin Road. The street department has done two utility cuts, put out new signs, clean ditches. There was a need for a closed session. Councilman Wilson made a motion to enter into closed session. Councilman Farham seconded the motion. Motion passed, made to enter into closed at 4:47. We came out at 5:20. Chairman France asked for a motion to start building the solid waste building down inside the sewage stream of the plant. Councilman Wilson made the motion. Councilman Farham seconded. Motion passed. So we're starting to build. We're going to be building that also. And that will be done, hopefully, at good savings cost with us doing a bunch of the work.
Very good, and Bruce, could I talk about Pippin Road real quick?
Sure.
We usually haven't paved Pippin or Superior because of the flooding.
Yeah, that goes underwater, especially when you start getting down there.
Just, that was a surprise to me, because we usually never talk about paving those two streets.
I think we have, Mayor, I think we have a draft list of streets to pave, and it has not been officially approved, so any of those things are subject to discussion. I mean, I think there's some discussion on, I think we're going to bring it back to the next meeting. You're going to discuss that. We'll take that concern under, under advisement.
I just wonder if Pippin Road wouldn't have the water rushing as much as Superior. I mean, that's what it is.
Pippin Road has a lot of water rushing. We'll take, we'll, we'll do a little bit of research on it. It gets hard hit during some of the, some of the floods. It gets really hard hit.
Right.
So we'll, we'll research a little bit more, and we'll, we'll bring back a recommendation to the committee.
Very good, and Mike, keep talking, because you are utility chairman, and you've got things going on.
February 4th, call to meeting order. We did have Mr. Bruce Goodrich here to add some comments into our ordinance regulating installation of propane service in the city. If you remember the big flood we had, we have propane tanks that were ripped out of the ground and floating down backyards and spraying gas.
Remember it well.
And so with a few more recent incidents, we've determined that we need to make some, we need to make an ordinance that governs stuff like that in certain areas of the community, and in regard to size of, maximum size of tanks within the geographical area of the city. And so we, we discussed that, and we will be continuing to discuss that. At next month, we had a few things that were of concern to committee members. Solid waste contract discussion. Mr. Harrell made the recommendation to move the ordinance, take the city council for approval, but states the city of Waynesville will enter the business of commercial solid waste collection within the city limits of Waynesville, Missouri, two years from the effective date of the notice. And I made the recommendation to moving this item to closed session for further discussion. Project updates, the water tower in Northern Heights is all in, and it is functional. Not yet. We're still.
We don't have the booster station.
Oh, the booster pump's not in?
No.
Okay. The tower's in, and it's looking good. And we did get a hydrant up there for that neighborhood, so that will definitely help in fire protection, instead of having to bring tanker trucks all the way back in, like I saw them come to the high school years ago, or the old middle school back down there, to fill up and go back out. And so that'll hopefully save some time. Industrial park sewer extension. Mr. John Doyle stated the public works construction crews have installed about 250 feet of gravity sewer line. The industrial park unit is continuing. Fiber optic installation, the new jail. Mr. Earl stated the fiber optic installation is scheduled to be installed on February 17th. President's day to possible road.
I was wondering what they were doing down there. I drove by there that day, Bruce, and I thought, oh, my goodness, they've got a water break, but I forgot that they were doing the fiber optic.
The next one is a great one for our citizens and our city, the SCADA. We had budgeted 180-some-odd thousand for this year. We got it for 73,000, and it was such a good deal that we've already jumped on it. Wastewater grant study. Mr. Harrell stated that the staff have met with the engineers are in the process of gathering information for the study. Recycling grant. Mrs. Jones updated the committee about the current recycling grant. That included handouts showing the timeline and brochure that will be handed out to our customers. So we did get the grant. We bought a bunch more containers.
We've got bins, so if your name is on the list for bins, come in and get them. I don't know if y'all are calling. Are you calling at all, or?
Yes, we call.
Okay, so we do have the recycling bins, and if you're interested in taking part in that, you can actually come and get one of our blue bins.
In, in the park, if you look behind the old school that was torn down, where they're putting in the jail, we have an electrical line that runs over where the kids play. That's going to ultimately be moved underground.
I like that a lot.
So we're going to get rid of overhead lines within the park.
That's nice.
Right-of-way clearing budget adjustment. Mr. Harrell presented the committee with a budget adjustment of 55,000 to 58,900 from being entered. of 55,000 to 58,900 from being entry service and debris removal for rightaway clearing within the city. Councilman Wilson made a motion to approve the budget adjustment. Councilman Conley seconded and all in favor. Basically, the reliability of our electrical service, if one, it cuts down the ability of the squirrels, they can only jump so far. And so, by cutting our rightaways and clearing them better, we've cut down on the outages caused by squirrels. We've also have worked very diligently to also eliminate branches that bring down our power lines. And we also, with, in reference with the state, where they passed a law where if we had a big tree in a yard that was capable of coming down over our lines, we could take them out also to enhance and improve electrical reliability throughout the city. And so, this is our third year for being in tree service, going through and clearing rightaways 'cause it's just too labor intensive for our little electrical crew to take care of.
And boy, is it paid, it's paid for itself. It's paid for itself.
It has. In conjunction with the other improvements we've done with reconductors, our reclosers. I mean, recloser just last month stopped 82 electrical outages in one month. I mean, just little things that can cause problems. So, we've, we're really working hard, our electrical people have. Department updates, gas department, Mr. York stated his department completed some visual and online testing, which is required by the Public Service Commission, finished up inventory and helped install sewer line in the industrial park. Water, wasting water department, Mr. Albert stated his department had 17 work orders, three meter repairs, three main repairs, four leaks on service lines, four sewer work orders, and they jetted one line. Electric department, Mr. Sheldon stated his department, three power outages, 13 work orders, three street lights, one tree, and six miscellaneous, 13 poles installed for feeder line C to D. That's what that basically is, is we've cut the rightaway and we've installed poles to conduct, to interconnect two major feeder lines that provide electric to the city. So, now, instead of outages taking out a whole area, we can backfeed power from another portion of the city to that, to where we can eliminate a lot of the, instead of the whole area being out, we can reduce that amount of outages wherever it may occur by backfeeding power. And we've been doing this for the last couple of years also. A motion was made, oh, I stated there was a necessity to go into closed session. And motion was made by Councilman Wilson to go into closed session at 4:24 and seconded by Councilman Conley. Motion carried, 5:23. Councilman Conley made a, made a motion to send the ordinance, this is after we came out at 5:23. Councilman Conley made a motion to send an ordinance establishing a rate increase for trash service in the city to Wayne, City of Waynesville, to city council for approval. So, we'll have that to deal with. Councilman Wilson seconded and all were in favor. Councilman Conley made a motion to approve the proposed trash building location site and cost estimate. Councilman Wilson seconded, all were in favor. Councilman Wilson made a motion to send an ordinance approving the city's of Waynesville assumption of commercial solid waste collection services pursuant to Missouri revised statutes to the city council for approval and Councilman Conley seconded, all were in favor. Having no further business, meeting adjourned by myself at 5:24. Next meeting, March 3rd, 3:30.
Very good, Mike, any questions? Now, Mike, even though you were full of great information, I give you a B+.
I was only a C student, so that's...
That's a step up, isn't it? Guys, we do have two ordinances connected with the things that Mike discussed. And I hope that the public kinda noticed there that we are intending to begin solid waste management for the city. And no details to announce at this time, but we are involved in that. And so, we need two ordinances passed tonight. Our counselor is not here tonight, John is our counselor. And he is going to get, read ordinance 2398, which has to do with solid waste management.
First reading of ordinance number 2398. An ordinance amending ordinance 767, establishing rates for solid waste management and recycling services furnished by the city of Waynesville fixing and effective date.
You have to read it again.
Second reading of ordinance number 2398. An ordinance amending ordinance 767, establishing rates for solid waste management and recycling services furnished by the city of Waynesville fixing and effective date.
Very good, and I know we're going to discuss this, but I would entertain a motion.
Motion?
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Jerry here, I heard first, and discussion. And first of all, let's let Mr. Harrell talk about this a little bit to the public and tell the public what we're doing here.
Okay, Mayor, the team here, the staff that you see here, you know, we did evaluation of basically our trash services. I believe that we hadn't had a rate increase in the trash area since, was it 1994?
Oh, my gosh.
So, we make 45 cents basically on trash. When we did evaluation, we were actually going in the hole. By the time you pay your staff, your postage, you know, your costs, you have bad debt, you know, some people don't pay their bill. Of course, we always have to pay our bill. We saw that we were in the hole on the trash service. So, we brought this information, of course, to the utility committee, presented the problem, and the utility came up with a solution to kinda phase in a rate increase over a period of several years.
And I believe it's about $3 over three years.
Yes. And I think it will still be lower than a lot of people have outside the city limits. But it was not really sustainable for us to operate that service, basically what would be at a slight loss to the city. You know, basically, the other utilities would have to pick up the slack to cover what we're experiencing in the trash service.
Well, I think just the simple fact you said we haven't had an increase since 1994.
Yes.
Is enough to explain that? And I would think for the public, I know for myself, we have citizens in the audience tonight, $3 over three years, we probably won't even notice it, but the city will notice it as we begin to hopefully break even.
Yes, and I got amended staff, you know, John, Michelle, Tracy, you know, Mitch and Miriam, and, you know, the whole crew here.
Good job.
Did a good analysis based on, you know, what we're, what we're experiencing with the trash.
Good job, and sometimes we actually pay consultants to do that and pay them big bucks. You guys are gonna get a coke. But we appreciate it, great job. Mike, you have a comment or question?
One of the other reasons is, like I've stated, we're taking over the trash. That means we're gonna have to hire employees and we're gonna have to have equipment, which all is gonna cost. And so, we've gotta pay for that somehow.
And this helps us get ready for that.
This helps us get there, so it's just time.
Anything else, any other questions?
The third date on that increase should be 2022.
We have... Yes, it should.
Should be 2022.
We'll correct that. Very good. Good eye, Ed.
No, we're in it. You get an A+.
Any other questions? All right, Madam Clark, what you call the roll?
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Farnham?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That ordinance passes. We also have ordinance 2399, which has to do with the fact that we do intend to begin a solid waste collection service in the city. I started to say counselor. Assistant city administrator, John.
First reading of ordinance number 2399. An ordinance approving city of Waynesville's assumption of commercial solid waste collection services pursuant to Missouri revised statutes 260.247, fixing and effective date. Second reading of ordinance number 2399. An ordinance approving city of Waynesville's assumption of commercial solid waste collection services pursuant to Missouri revised statutes 260.247, fixing and effective date.
I entertain a motion.
Motion.
And I heard motion here and a second from Clarence. I'll get you next time, Ed. Mike Curtis made the motion, Clarence the second. And questions and comments? Again, I would just tell the public that this is legally something we have to do in order to get ready to begin a solid waste collection. And so, it's really just a kinda paperwork.
And Mayor, this is for commercial, uh...
Right.
Commercial.
Sorry.
We do not have to do this for residential, but for commercial.
And I forgot that, 'cause residential, there already are customers. Okay. Okay, everybody, anything? Madam Clark, what you call the roll?
Councilman Farnham?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Thank you.
That ordinance passes and thank you, Mr. Harrell, for correcting me. Can we stop for just a moment because you did not remind me, Michelle, you must, because I forget, you must make a note. I did not ask for citizens' comments.
Citizens' comments, yeah.
She usually gives me the eye.
I usually do.
Yeah, is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the city council besides Bonnie Wilson? Bonnie already spoke. Okay, thank you, I needed to do that though because I forgot. We're moving along to finance and human resources, and that is Councilman Liberty.
Finance and human resource committee meeting, February 13th, 2025 p.m. Councilman Jerry Brown was asked to sit in because of Councilman Davis and Councilman Curtis was unable to make the meeting. Meeting was called to order at 5:00 p.m., reviewed the bills, and we voted to, we approved to pay the bills. Monthly budget review account status, Mr. Harrell reported to the committee that as of this date, we had over 3.7 million in city bank accounts with 2.7 million in restricted accounts. Mr. Harrell reported that as of the end of the year, we were 9% of our budget projections in expenses and 10% our budget projections in revenue. There was a discussion of proposed ordinance about expired business licenses. And at the current, the penalty is a dollar a month. There's really no motivation for somebody to...
Exactly.
Pay their business license. So, it was raised to go on to council for $10 for each additional month it's late after the first month. So, that was approved to be forwarded to the full council. Annual review of budget balance reserve policy, Mr. Harrell stated city fund balance reserve policy states maintain reserve city funds at or above 10 to 15% of normal operating budget for a three-month period. He proposed a change in the wording to say maintain revenue in city funds at 10 to 15% of normal operating budget. And vote was called and it was approved to go before the council, full council. Personnel budget on medical marijuana. Mr. Harrell provided information to the committee, provided a memo that summarized possible updates to the city personnel manual. Assistant city administrator, John Doyle stated he spoke with the insurance provider, MAMA, but they don't have any advice as of this time. Mr. Harrell recommended that it be continued to be researched. Discussion of transitional league. And then, there was a need for closed session for legal personnel and real estate went into closed session at 5:31, returned to regular at 5:53. Next meeting will be held on March 12th, 2020 at 5:00 p.m.
Very good.
I'm sorry if I hurt you.
And I was out of town for that meeting also. You talked about some interesting things there. Any questions for Clarence? Okay. I was, I was a little surprised that Myrma didn't have anything to say about medical marijuana with our employees.
Mayor, I think it's so new that neither MML or Myrma have just adopted any recommendations.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Things are still in the research stage.
So, we'll just kinda be watching MML and see what comes out. Very good, thank you. And then, we do have an ordinance that involves those business licenses, okay? And again, another example of things that really we just needed to update. I believe everybody would agree on that. This is, get ready, John, this is ordinance 2400, and this has to do with business licenses.
First reading of ordinance number 2400. An ordinance amending chapter 605 regarding the issuance of business licenses, fixing and effective date. Second reading of ordinance number 2400. An ordinance amending chapter 605 regarding the issuance of business licenses, fixing and effective date.
Very good, I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Mike, I was trying to give, I was trying to give this one to Ed. Motion by Mike and Clarence seconded it. Are there any questions or comments? Phil?
Yeah, business licenses, is it on their anniversary date or the first of the year of what?
I think it's the first of the year, isn't it?
First of the year.
Yep. Anything else?
I have a question on it.
Okay, Ed, sorry.
Section 2 talks about the penalty of 90 days in jail, $500 fine if you're convicted. So, that would mean the police have to issue the ticket, but is there any timeframe for that? Or would you do it the third month? I think we need to...
You'd probably just follow state law, doesn't it?
I think there's some discretion there when a ticket would be written. Normally, we talk to people and try to get them to voluntarily comply before we, before we'd send out, before we'd ask the police to...
I understand that, but I think we need to have a timeline because you can't go down and send the police down after John Jones, the first day of a monthly business and give his neighbor three months where he is typically.
I think normally, we're gonna try to work with people for two or three months before we, before we turn over the place.
Not a problem that, Bruce, but I think we need to say three months? Or four months or whatever we're gonna do. As in it would come to...
Sometimes, sometimes situations vary amongst, sometimes situations vary. I hate to tie the police's hands. Whether or not they can go, sometimes we, it's hard for us to catch somebody or something like that. I understand your issue. I understand your issue.
Bruce, can we discuss with our attorney that, what options we might have to, to be helpful with our business people?
Yes.
Yeah, I understand what Ed's saying.
Yes, I understand what Ed's coming, and we can, we can probably address that to a policy.
Oh, okay.
I think, Mr. Conley, if you don't mind, we can address that to a policy rather than an ordinance. And the policy could kinda, kinda address what kinda steps we'd like to take and the procedures we'd wanna go, we'd wanna go to before we, before we went to that option.
And the chances of that happening are probably very, very high. But, good question, Ed. Anything else? Madam Clark, what you call the roll?
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Farnham?
Yes.
Thank you.
That ordinance passes and we have the police committee, Councilman Liberty. By the way, I didn't grade you all ago, so I'm gonna grade you after this one, okay? I didn't give you a grade.
No pressure.
Yeah, just saying, just saying.
Meeting was called to order at 3:30, there was no citizen's comment. We discussed focus on reduced taxi while driving. Mr. Harrell stated that one of the major goals... Mr. Harrow stated that one of the major goals is to increase citizen safety. He presented the committee with information about the major reasons why we should not tax and drive. There's an alarming uprising of deaths due to taxing and driving. Mr. Harrow recommends for police officers to put forth effort and enforcing that law by giving warnings to try to reduce use of cell phones while driving, and the committee agreed. ATV usage. Mr. Harrow presented the committee with a sample ordinance pertaining to the city streets. He would like to give the committee a chance to look over and bring it back to the next meeting. Councilman France suggested there be some type of verbiage stating an order to obtain a permit. It is required that ATV have headlights, taillights, turn signals, brake lights, the same thing that automobiles have to have. Signaling that traffic circles, Mr. Harrow stated, Mr. Muchlo drew up a sample ordinance that would slightly update our current city ordinance. It would add a section that states no person shall exit the roundabout without first giving a signal in the statutory manner in the event that other vehicles may be affected by such movement. City Clerk Michelle Brown stated she would look for something more current, up to date ordinance. Restriction in driving down the middle turn lane, Mr. Harrow presented proposed ordinance on the restriction. He stated the middle turn lane are not meant to be used for driving or passing. The ordinance is designed to explain what the middle lane is for. Chief Cordova suggested that where it states a vehicle shall not be driven in lane for distance of more than 500 feet, we reduce it to 100 feet. Councilman Conley made a motion to make a change to send it before the full council, and Councilman Brown seconded it. Motion passed. Emergency pursuit. There needs to be a stricter policy, and that's Myrma, our insurance carrier, would like a stricter policy than what we currently have. Animal shelter update, Daniella Greedlove gave an update of animal shelter. She stated they took in a total of 408 dogs in 2019. And one of the things that I would like to make sure that everybody realizes is the adoption rate at our animal shelter is 96%. They're doing an excellent job up there. Police Department update, Chief Cordova gave an update on Homeland Security Sub Award. Police Department received cover training. There was also another grant for two Rapid ID systems. And Chief Cordova stated Officer Brian Moore has returned to Waynesville Police Department. He has between six to seven and a half years of experience. There is a need for closed session. We went into closed session at 4:12, came back out at 4:29. Having no further business, the meeting was adjourned at 4:29. Next scheduled meeting will be March 5 at 3:30 p.m.
Very good. And any questions for Clarence? Clarence, you're getting a B. You're getting a B because it was just a little word. I won't do this, hey, I won't do this next month, I promise. While we're talking about police and our chief is in the back, I wanted to say, I was going to say this at the end, but I'm going to say it now, that we are so proud of Vic Weir. And Detective Weir retired, how many years, chief?
Eight and a half years.
Eight and a half years with us. Vic did not want any hoopla, and so we abided by his wish. But tonight, I want to say congratulations to Vic and his wife, and I hope they enjoy their retirement. And I, for one, am very proud of what Vic has done for our city.
Absolutely.
Okay? We have an ordinance, we have an ordinance about driving your car down the turn lane. And I realize some people are going, you really have to have an ordinance about that? The answer is yes. You cannot believe the people that think that's a middle lane that you can drive in. And so we have an ordinance that's going to make that illegal. Do not be doing that. And in fact, the only time you get in that lane is if you're turning. Actually, okay, never mind. I do break that sometimes. And I saw it today. I saw someone pull out of a business and sat.
See mine as you're getting along.
No, but I'm, I'm a mayor, I pardon myself. Pulls out and waits to get in the traffic. And I know you told me that's illegal. So I'm, I am guilty, I really am. I, I do, I don't travel in it, but I do pull out in order to get in traffic. My chief tells me that's illegal, so don't do that. But this ordinance has to do with driving your vehicle. And Assistant City Administrator Doyle, would you read ordinance 2401?
First reading of ordinance number 2401. An ordinance amending chapter 315 of the Municipal Code of the City of Waynesville regarding vehicle turning movements, fixing and effective date. Second reading of ordinance number 2401. An ordinance amending chapter 315 of the Municipal Code of the City of Waynesville regarding vehicle turning movements, fixing and effective date.
Very good. I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ed Conley, second by Sean Wilson. And is there any discussion?
Yesterday evening, I was returning home.
Uh-oh.
And I pulled into the center lane, my turn signal on, make, make a left turn on Summit Street.
Okay.
Okay? There was, I was past the driveway to church, so I was walking the 100 feet. There was no car behind me in the turn lane, all light and the light. I was almost hit by not one, but by two vehicles that were going to pull into the center lane at that point.
To, to turn. Yeah. I know what you're talking about.
That's why you're calling it suicide.
Well, and that's why there's a break in the painting to show you where to go in.
Yes, but people don't, don't like that.
Yes, but they don't do it, yeah. Okay? Any other thing, anything else? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman France.
Yes.
That ordinance passes and now it is technically illegal to drive your car down the middle lane. And actually, if you pass your driver's test, it's in there. All right? We usually don't have this much fun, Amanda, you're just really enjoying this tonight, aren't you?
I am.
But I, I have determined that we're going to have a good time these next few months. And, you know, even though I, look, I knocked the TV off. Okay? Even though I cried at one point today, we laughed at other times. So we have now the airport and, of course, several ordinances there. John, I'm going to grade you.
I'll be waiting.
Get ready. And Councilman Wilson.
Oh, I thought.
Were you not there?
Yeah, I was there.
Okay.
The Airport Board took place on January 28 at 3:00 p.m. Of course, there was a motion that passed to approve the minutes. I'm just going to hit the highlights here. The budget was voted on, it was, it was completed and received as, once the motion was passed. Right now, it is a little over $100,000. But it will be, it will be a balanced budget once we receive our reimbursements back for grants. We have Part 139 workshop, and we will be sending a representative to that training. If you want to know more about that, you can go to FAA.gov and look into the weeds of all of that information about that certification. Implementation numbers we're in, a little over 5,500 for the year of 2019. Also, we had a 139 inspection in regard to our airport operations management, and everything went pretty well. There were some terminal seats that was, that were erected, and the city actually paid for it and is non-reversable from the grant.
What is it, real quick, what is, in just a word, word or two, what's 139? I've been...
That's the jet.
Is the 139, is it workshop certification for...
That's the FAA inspection of the airport, since we've upgraded the service there, now we fall under their inspection. So we have a yearly inspection by FAA. It's called Part 139. I think that refers to the code that it's under.
I had forgotten. So...
Okay. As far as new business, the FAA was, was pleased with the inspection and attitude of our employees, some of us commendable for the employees down at the airport. Parallel taxiway, we have a supplemental agreement that was approved and a motion was passed to grant that request. The passenger terminal expansion, we had a final inspection on January 15 of 2020, and we do have a supplemental agreement approval request for that information as well, and that motion was passed. The SOP marketing report, there was a lot of great information as far as marketing is concerned. Just one of the highlights, I think, is pertinent for us today is that there will be some updates to the website to reflect the new interline booking availability on Expedia and how that impacts the checked baggage. So that's some great information there. Also, we had a other business, the next meeting is going to be February 24, 25 at 2020, 3:00 p.m. in Waynesville here. There was a need for closed session. We went to closed session at 3:39. We came out of closed session at 3:49, and then there was a motion passed to adjourn at 3:49 from the meeting, and it was passed.
Very good. Questions for Sean? And we do have some ordinance, or, yes.
The employment, the 5854, is that total going out and coming in or just...
In, just in.
Just in. Isn't the magic number that's been wanting to hit for years, 10,000, to get... There's two magic numbers now, one is 8,000, one's 10,000. At 8,000, we get approximately 600,000 in grants. At 10,000, we get $1 million in grants. So we're striving to reach those numbers, and that's one of the goals of our marketing campaigns.
Very hopeful, too, that if, with the baggage agreement, that that's going to be helpful.
Yes, it's now, it is now a little bit this year, of course, with the change for a new airline, there's sometimes a delay. And now that they've got some airline agreements and some other things going, that we hope that that will pick up.
And a lot of positive comments about our service out there. I don't believe I've seen anything, Mary, I haven't seen anything bad about the service. And so if you haven't given it a try, it, I see some people in the audience shaking their head, it's wonderful. What a quick way to get to St. Louis. In fact, I'm going soon, I may think about doing that. We do, do have, and for the public that's watching us tonight, we do have two quick ordinances to pass, and these have to do with the grants that we get concerning the airport, and so a lot of it is just bookkeeping. And so we won't go into a lot of the detail on them, but they have to do with our projects that we're doing there. So this is proposed ordinance 2402, and it has to do with a block grant. John?
First reading of ordinance number 2402. An ordinance amending, ordinance number 2297, authorizing the mayor of the City of Waynesville to execute supplemental agreement number two for the state block grant agreement between the City of Waynesville, City of St. Robert, and the Missouri Highway and Transportation Committee, fixing and effective date. Second reading of ordinance number 2402. An ordinance amending, ordinance number 2297, authorizing the mayor of the City of Waynesville to execute supplemental agreement number two for the state block grant agreement between the City of Waynesville, City of St. Robert, and the Missouri Highway and Transportation Committee, fixing and effective date.
Very good. I entertain a motion. Motion by Sean, second by Ed. Any questions? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman France.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Thank you.
That ordinance passes. We have ordinance 2403, and this also has to do with, I get, commercial, the terminal, the terminal. And John?
First reading of ordinance number 2403. An ordinance amending, ordinance number 2377, authorizing the mayor of the City of Waynesville to execute supplemental agreement number two for airport aid agreement between the City of Waynesville, City of St. Robert, and the Missouri Highway and Transportation Committee, fixing and effective date. Second reading of ordinance number 2403. An ordinance amending, ordinance number 2377, authorizing the mayor of the City of Waynesville to execute supplemental agreement number two for airport aid agreement between the City of Waynesville, City of St. Robert, and the Missouri Highway and Transportation Committee, fixing and effective date.
Very good. I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Jerry.
Second.
Second by Mike Curtis. And questions or comments? And again, I believe this is on the terminal project. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman France.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Thank you.
That ordinance passes, and John, I'm going to give you a grade. You know, Ralph is an A+.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. I'm going to give you an A.
Really?
Yes. Because you did a great job. My teacher comment to you would be, give it a little more emotion and act like, you know, it's really something that you're interested in.
Get excited.
Get excited. But you have an A. I couldn't give you an A+ because, you know, Ralph is the, is the or, counselor. Okay, and our last committee, meeting of the night is Councilman Farnum. Bill?
Yep. We met on February 4th. We were running about 29 minutes late because the committee in front of us kind of went a little bit too long.
Hmm.
Anyway, we had no citizen comments.
Because we have a lot of business, and we spend a lot of money.
We discussed draft ordinances on the new building codes. Mr. Harrow made some updates. Then we went to propose state legislation concerning the sunshine laws and changes being enacted. Jumped to the economic development issue of business spotlights, which we have already seen tonight with Lawson Woods Antique being newly nominated. And then Mr. Harrow also discussed with his upcoming events, the Military Preaching Day in Jeff City, his camps in Hoover Weather. Have they rescheduled that, Bruce?
I believe it's March 31st.
Oh.
I believe it's, I'll have to confirm that, but I believe that's the date.
The other events, as mentioned earlier, God's House Walkathon, February 22, an Easter event sponsored by North Lee. We did do a little bit of business on Christmas lights.
I like that.
We were into that. Discussed updating the decorations and researched and found rope lights for $27 a piece, which is a good price. We had a need to go into closed session, which we did at 5:42. We came out of closed session at 6:09, and we adjourned at 6:09.
Very good. And I think the rope lights around the whole square are going to be dramatic, and so I thank you guys for that. Thank you for doing that. Do we have any other business that needs to be discussed? I don't believe so, so let's hear from Bruce, his city administrator report.
First, Mayor, I've given a written report, and of course, a lot of things we've already covered in the court. I do want to highlight a couple of things. We reviewed the performance of our community improvement district, and last year we had a record revenue, and it was 21% over the previous record in, in 2016.
That's right.
So I think that's good, and I think it shows some growth, growth in our sales tax revenue in the city. We've also, in addition to Sergeant Weir retiring, we also had Randy Brown retired, so we appreciate his service, and we promoted Trey to take his position. And Corporal Shaker is on transitional leave, has he accepted a position with the Osage County Sheriff Department? As you mentioned before, we've got those recycling bins, and we've got a recycling grant, appreciate you could work with the staff on that. And we have included a list of all the major goals and projects, and put it in your packet, and we've reviewed all those major goals and projects with each committee as they come out. Also, last but not least, I thank the chili cook-off team.
Yay! Yay!
Throw those awards there.
The chili chicks and Bruce.
And very good.
Second place.
Second place in judges' choice, second place in showmanship, and third place in people's choice, and we had a great team, and Dr. Brown was there to help us, and the mayor and a lot of city council members were there, too, to have some good chilies, so we appreciate your support.
It was very, very good, and I appreciate you guys doing that.
Actually, we sold out of chili, too. There wasn't a couple left.
That's right.
I really thought ours was the best, and yes, you may quote me, I thought ours was the best. Okay, we have council comments, and we'll start down here with Mike France.
It's cold outside, stay warm. Back on your neighbors.
Very good. Ed?
There's a, I think there may be a scam going around. This morning, at exactly 10:12, I got a phone call from myself. I'm sitting there on my phone, looking at the caller ID, and it says, "I'm the one calling", which is kind of interesting. Then it turns out the message was from Allison, who works for Microsoft, who wanted me to give her my numbers because my IP address had been hacked into somewhere in China. Says, "I didn't really make the call, I don't think it was legitimate." So you get a call from me, and it's from Allison of Microsoft, I would suggest strongly that you not give them any information.
And I would tell you that...
Not me.
I was reading the other day, that's called cloning, where they come in and clone the numbers, and I was reading some stuff on that, and they are really getting on that, and hopefully they'll stop some of it. But isn't that a hoot? And I do a terrible thing. When they call me, I say, "Hang on just a minute, I'll be right back," and then I just leave it there. And so pretty soon I pick it up, and guess what, they're gone. Okay. Always got a good story from Ed. Clarence?
First off, I'd like to thank Mr. Harrell, City Administrator, Assistant City Administrator, John Doyle, their staff, and the city employees for the excellent job they've been doing. They make us look good.
You're here.
And thank you to each one of you that came to this meeting. But especially, I command Assistant City Administrator John Doyle for the excellent reading of the ordinance.
You're here. He got an A.
I would give you an A+. And there, I want to know what my grade was for the city administrator.
Oh, you get A+.
All right, all the time.
Oh, yeah. You get A+ all the time.
Actually, I thought he preferred like a C, because he didn't cover all the points in that report.
But that's because we all had, and that's why he got the A+.
And then Liberty sucking up.
Jerry?
Since we're giving out grades tonight, I will give the city staff and the city manager an A+.
Here, here.
The city council only an A.
Don't get us in trouble, Dr. Brown.
Wow. Boy, I hope, I hope they don't give me a grade of A.
You know, since I've served, city council infrastructure has improved immensely, and Mr. France was talking about, I don't know how it works, but I know in my own residence, the lights blinks sometimes, but they don't go out as often, so whatever's being done is helping our community. Thank you to the utility people.
Very good. Sean?
I'm a little bit...
Oh, Sean!
Don't shoot any armadillos.
Uh-oh, well, the chief left. Is this going to be a good story for me to hear?
I'll just leave it there. Just make sure, the city does have traps that's applicable within the city limits for free. If you have problems with pests like that, you can actually come and sign out a trap and bring the trap back once it's empty. And then you're supposed to find a place to let it loose, and it shouldn't be within the city limits.
Within the city?
No. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, I can't wait to hear the story. Bill?
I can't talk that...
And I would say to you camera people, you kids on the, isn't this fun? It's a lot more fun, this, look at all of them giving me the thumbs up. It's a lot more fun when we have fun, right, Mr. Wallace? Just two things, and I'll talk fast. First one is Randy Brown. I wanted to say publicly how much we appreciate Randy. We did give him a lunch this past week, or maybe the week before. But Randy has left us after 21 years with the city, and he has been such a good employee and has loved our parks and loved our kids, and we're going to miss him. But I will tell you that I think he trained Trey really well, and I think that we're going to expect great things from Trey. So my compliments to Randy. And then very quickly, I did go on the SOP trip to San Antonio, and I went with Mayor Lauritsen and Dorsey Newcomb and Joe Driscoll, and then the Garrison Commander, Colonel Towns. And yes, we did have fun. Yes, we did go out on the Riverwalk. And so then I'll stop and say, "Thank you, citizens of Waynesville, for the opportunities that you have given me over the years," and this is just one of them. I attended the Association for Defense Communities, and I just wanted to tell you two things that I attended one, every hour we were doing something. But two of them that I thought were really good for our, our city is the chief of staff talked about priorities for the Army and for communities, and they, of course, are all the things that through SOP that we work on. Housing, education, in fact, he said education is always number one, and we know that. Coming to the military, first thing you look at are the schools, and so that was number one. Childcare availability, spouse employment, which we really are probably lacking a little bit in our area, and hopefully we're going to work on that. And then health care. And health care is something that we've worked on in our community, and trying to improve the opportunities that we have for health care in our communities, for example, the medical clinic, which offers after-care care, and as well, of course, as Mercy. So those were issues. And then I went to one that was really a lot of fun to attend because it was called Rural and Isolated Bases. And we hit, we fit the rural part. We're definitely not isolated anymore, but we definitely are rural. And one of the things that came out of that is that so many soldiers come to Fort Leonardwood maybe, and they're not really happy at first, and then they get here and they love it. And mostly, they love the fact that it's rural. And so the gist of this thing was, keep the rural, you know, add opportunities, but keep the rural. And, you know, they say, in our area, especially, in fact, these things I wrote down, I'm saying to myself, we are so on it, through SOP especially, but the real issues in the future are going to be encroachment. We don't have any, you know, in our area. No diversification in the communities, that has always been a problem in our, in our community. And we, both communities have, both cities have been working on trying to change that. And then a lot of money, Army money, doesn't go to the rural areas, it goes more to the urban areas, and so that's a real issue for us. So I just was struck by the fact that, when they did say this, a BRAC is coming. And even though you hear, oh, they're not going to do a BRAC, the Colonel who was giving this presentation said, yes, there will be. There will be a BRAC. And that focus will be on partnerships, we're A+. Schools, we're A+. Spousal work, probably a C. Healthcare, I would say we're B. We're all about grades tonight, aren't we? But that's kind of how I looked at it, as they were talking about it. And again, I enjoyed that, and I will remind you that we really went to San Antonio this year to support Joe Driscoll, our old friend here who was part, actually started SOP, was one of the founding people. We went to support him because he became the new president of the Association for Defense Communities, and I will tell you, he did a marvelous job. Was so proud of Joe and wish him, wish him well. So again, I thank the citizens for that, and we have had a wonderful meeting. Is anybody going to give me a grade?
Mayor of the staff gives you an A+.
Woo! Woo! I know, they want, they're going to ask me for a D. That's exactly what they ask. And so this meeting is adjourned.